I want to call our meeting to order for the public hearing and agenda of the Board of Education meeting.
Fudge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Freitas, before we get started, do you want to introduce our RBTV board members?
Yes, good evening, Arab Board of Members. I would like to introduce one of our newest faculty members, Mr. Matthew Holdren, who's going to be leading our RBTV. Mr. Holdren.
Hello. We've seen some of your work already, and we're excited. And actually, I asked Dr. Skinkis earlier today to make sure he includes the link in our Friday update packet, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Sorry about that.
We're going to move on to the public hearing first. Just for the people in the audience, we do have a small, not small, we have a public hearing on the budget, and then move into the regular board meeting. So we do need to do the roll call as well. Thank you.
Mr. Durkin?
Here.
Ms. Gasko?
Here.
Ms. Rosska?
Here.
Ms. Flack?
Here.
Ms. Van Hoorn?
Here.
Here. A quorum being present, the first order of business is to hold a public hearing on the budget prepared in tentative form as set forth in the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education held on June 13, 2023. The tentative budget for District 208 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024 was placed on file and was conveniently available at the district's administrative offices. All persons desiring to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony. So at this time, I would ask Dr. Skinkis to give us an overview of the proposed budget.
Thank you. The budget will be posted online once approved by the board. It's anticipated total revenues for FY '24 to be $31,957,614,000, and then anticipated expenditures $31,687,614,000. So we'll have approximately about a $200,000 surplus, $270,000 to be exact.
Do we have any comments from the Board of Education? We'll have a more robust discussion on the budget prior to our actual adoption. Any comments from the Board of Ed at this point?
Some of the money that we're calling surplus, isn't that money that we've earmarked for some improvements to the school?
No. That surplus, that $2.9 million is in the fund balance.
Oh, not that, the $200,000 that you were talking about?
The $200,000 is roughly what we have surplus right now in that budget for.
Right, so that surplus, hadn't we talked about keeping earmarking that money for some repairs before our life safety, our new life safety?
I think this anticipates those expenditures already.
Those are all included already in the budget.
Okay, so the $200,000 is in addition to the repairs that we were talking about?
Correct. The landscaping project and auditorium has been rewired, correct.
So this will be for the fund balance?
Okay.
Any other comments from the Board of Ed at this point? Again, we'll have a more thorough briefing on it when it comes to that point in the agenda. Seeing none, are there any public comments on the proposed budget? I know we have public comments this evening, but I wanted to make sure you're in the right alignment of the meeting. So all persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present oral or written testimony with respect to the proposed budget. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion to adjourn from Ms. Ruska?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Van Hoorn. Lorre, do you want to read it?
I'm so sorry. Thank you. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, moves that the public hearing on the 2023-2024 budget be adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry about any confusion there for a second. We thought we were scripted, and we didn't quite get the script going.
I didn't get it.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the regular Board of Education meeting, discussion information items, and FOIA requests fall into this section.
We had two FOIAs in the month of August, Bo-Kim, Union bids, just requesting copies of the landscape bid, and then Sherry Reed's smart procure. We kind of get these on a quarterly basis, just looking for purchase order numbers, purchase dates, line items, line item quantity, price items, et cetera. Those are your two FOIAs for the month of August.
Thank you, Dr. Skinkis. We didn't have any questions or comments on those. Additional discussion items, I had one item I wanted to share with the board, and we'll ask Dr. Skinkis to put in the Friday packet. Dr. Dubiel, who works with Dr. Freitas and others here at the school, doing a lot of the DEI training, is offering a similar training for Board of Education members on October 14th from 8:00 to 10:00 via Zoom. So that's something that we can all avail of ourselves of if we're interested. Someone's trying to call in. So I will ask him to share that information to learn more about Dr. Dubiel's initiatives and how she's working with not just our district, but others.
I think, yeah, I think the Zoom meeting will be open to school boards from around the area. It's a, it says like a two-hour, just a background information, and I think, you know, if you can make yourself available, do it remotely on a Saturday morning, it will also help as you start to get reports from Dr. Freitas' leadership, you know, his leadership groups as they come and present to the board new things that we're doing at the school. It will help us all, you know, provide some continuity from the board through, all the way through the staff that's doing all the work on the committee structure.
So you'll include the link in the details?
Yes, I will.
Do you have an idea roughly what time?
8:00 to 10:00.
8:00 to 10:00.
AM.
I can also ask if there's a recording available.
Please do. Thank you. Any other additional discussion items from any member of the board? Okay. Public comment, do we have anyone here for public comment this evening? Okay. Going to read a small paragraph as you come up before this one. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. Thank you.
All righty. Good evening. My name is Liz Buscio, and I am here as a representative of the music and theater sponsors, and we want to just give you guys an update as to what's been happening just at the start of the school year. So we're off to a really great start. A lot of students are jumping into opportunities in theater and music. For example, we had a cappella auditions. Fifty-three kids signed up. Forty-nine showed up. Forty-nine are in a cappella, and it's so large she had to break it into two different groups. So they're really excited about that. We had 30 students join our first meeting for tech crew for the fall play, which is going to be a Christmas carol. There were 62 kids that auditioned for that play. Many of them were freshmen, and a lot of them are boys. So we're real excited about that, too. And we had nearly 20 students audition for Shenanigans, the improv group, and there were six new members of that group. So a lot of kids getting involved in music and theater at the beginning of the year, and we couldn't be more happy about it. Oh, I want to go back to a cappella. This is why I have notes. We have 14 of those students aren't in any choir classes at all. So we were pretty excited about that, too. And then Labor Day weekend, Carol Kesselring and Patrick Williams hosted the RB music community in their backyard for our second annual potluck and jam session. Their yard was packed. We had lawn chairs everywhere. You could barely walk through the yard. They have this beautiful stage, and kids from jazz band, rock band, orchestra, and choir all performed for a huge crowd. I think there was, what, maybe an hour and a half of music, something like that. It was wonderful. People brought food. There was a ton, it was just a great community event to really get people together. Last weekend, our RB marching Bulldogs performed for the Chicago Von Steuben Day Parade. Dr. Freitas was there and walked in the parade as well. Lots of parent volunteers, RB families, alumni cheering them on. It was a beautiful day. And we want to give props to RBTV. You guys are crushing it, doing a lot of coverage for the band, specifically at the football games and other music events, along with the rest of the school. And we really appreciate the support you guys are giving. And we'd like the board to check out our social media pages, Instagram and Facebook. There's a lot of stuff out there. You can see the performances from the Labor Day weekend out there as well. And we've got our student board members from band, choir, orchestra, and a cappella are posting all over social media, and they're putting it out there, not just music and theater sponsors posting it, but the kids are posting it on their social media sites. So they're really stepping it up to get the word out about what's happening in the school. And the last thing I want to mention is our next Music and Theater Sponsors meeting is Monday, September 18th at 7:00 PM in the band room. So if you don't attend enough meetings already, you are absolutely invited to join us for that meeting. You don't have to have a kid in music or in theater to join our organization. If you'd like to join our organization, you can do so on our website, which is rbhsmusicandtheater.org. Music and theater, all spelled out. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Good news. Thank you.
Yes. We will have the formal presentations from the Music and Theater boosters, the athletic boosters, and the other organizations when?
Usually it's either October or November, right, Mary Ann?
It's November because I was here.
Oh, okay.
So November.
Okay. Just something to file away for you guys as well.
Okay.
Any other comment this evening? Okay. Thank you very much for the update. Moving on to the consent agenda, approval of minutes.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on August 8, 2023, open and closed, as presented in the September 12, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Hoorn. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. And now we move on to old business, life safety items, capital improvement, sustainability. I don't believe we have anything this evening.
Yeah, just a brief update with the board. The HVAC project is complete. The units are running at about 50%. You know, supply chain issues, our exhaust fans, our return fans for those units will be arriving here hopefully within the next week. We knew this going into the project, but we were able to engineer the project so that we can have air conditioning in the cafeteria for the start of the school year and not wait for a full unit because the units were on back order, which some of our neighboring schools are dealing with those issues. But so overall, the units are running. We're almost through all the punch list items, and so we should be completely wrapped up, I'm hoping, by October 1st.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Nothing to take action on? Let's move on to the final budget, which is obviously our significant piece of action for the evening. Dr. Skinkis?
Yes, I did receive questions on the budget, so I want to go through that. First of all...
What page on the agenda? Just so we're all clear. It's five?
The final budget is on, I think, is it included with the hearing packet, Mary Ann?
Yep.
Yeah, so you got to go back to the front?
No, I think it's in the regular meeting agenda.
No, is it not?
Maybe it's in both places because it's also right up front, too.
Yeah.
Page four is the cover.
Because I'm on the back end of it, and I don't have it in here. I think it's the...
Final budget is the page.
There we go, Mary Ann.
It's up front.
Thank you.
All right, so as I stated in the Friday update for the board to be prepared, so we have a projected surplus of about $270,000. We had a decrease in CPPRT based on the FY '24 estimate. We had an increase in EBF, which is our evidence-based funding. We increased in interest income based on FY '23 actuals and a prediction from the township treasurer. An increase in expenditures for certified staffing to reflect final staffing. Finalized special education expenses and revenues based upon final review with Ladsy, who's the district special ed cooperative, and additional funds for after-school student transportation. So those are the main bullets that were updated, and I did receive a few questions, and I'll bring, provide a little more detail with that. So the decreased CPPRT, that's our corporate personal property replacement tax. That's a tax that goes on corporations and utility companies in the area to offset the lost revenue from the real estate taxes. I provided a definition. I sent out to the board earlier so you'd have like the textbook definition. But we saw a real big upswing in that during COVID and a year after COVID, and I think some of the tax loopholes had closed due to some of this COVID funding money, and so we're starting to see a decline in our CPPRT. So we did see a drop in that, and I think that was close to about $295,000. There was a question about the increase in EBF, evidence-based funding. So this is the second year where we qualified to be Tier One. There are four tiers in evidence-based funding. Evidence-based funding is the new funding formula that the state approved in like 2017. So out of that formula, they look at your adequacy scores of dollars needed and dollars recouped from all your revenue sources and where that is with your academic targets. And there's a bunch of variables that go into your ranking, but obviously, the more assistance you need from the state, you're closer to Tier One. The less assistance you need from the state, you're closer to Tier Four. So schools that have, do not have any financial issues, have over 100% fund balance, those schools tend to get less assistance. Schools closer to Tier One will get more assistance to help close that achievement gap. We have always kind of fluctuated between Tier Two and Tier One. For the last two years, we have just made the threshold of being a Tier One school, which is why we've seen about $400,000 in new state funding for the last two fiscal years. So one of the questions submitted is, is this something we can count on on an annual basis? We should always be right around Tier One, Tier Two. When we qualify as Tier One, it's right at the top of the cutoff score. So I would say if you, responsible budgeting is we should always be prepared for Tier Two, and if we get Tier One in a particular fiscal year like we have the last two years, it's a nice to get that additional funding. There were some other questions in regards to the fund, well, let's keep going on this list, increased interest income. So one of the questions submitted was, who handles like our interest investments? So Cook County is one of the only counties in Illinois that still has a township treasurer. And so what happens is the five sections that Cook County has broken up into, we have, you deal with a township treasurer, they collect all your real estate dollars from the Cook County, and they pool your money, and they do all of your investments for you. The negative thing, you know, if you've read previous articles, like with Lyons Township, they've been, they were removed, it took them a long drawn-out court case, but they got removed from the Lyons Township Treasurer's office. But sometimes you're paying for services that you're also already doing in-house as well. The good thing is, is that all the monies in the proviso township are then grouped into that one township investment pool, so it does help us gain larger return on our investments. So the proviso treasurer's office is who handles our investment pools. There was also a question about the increased expenditures for certified staffing to reflect final staffing, and the question submitted was, how does that work like with the school year already beginning? So it's very common in those first two weeks of August for sure, because we start the second week of August, you will get a lot of transfer students that will come in and are more on maybe a CPS schedule where they're used to starting after Labor Day. So there's a little bit of a scramble towards the beginning of the year to prove your residency and to register for school a little later. As we get those students, if we usually build in for transfers, but we also cannot, you know, at times, if you get additional students with IEPs where you may need additional teacher's aides, or eventually we need an additional section or two of special education to accommodate. So we post those positions. Sometimes we'll cover an urgent class covering with a overload until, you know, we'll pay a teacher to cover during one of their prep periods to teach that class until we can fill the vacancy. But that's how we would handle staffing during the school year. The other question was about after-school student transportation. So I don't know if you've been through the pickup line lately at dismissal, but you see a lot of coach buses. There's still a shortage of school bus drivers. There's only a few yellow bus drivers, companies that provide the yellow school buses in the area, and a lot of them cannot provide activity transportation until well after 4:00, when they're done doing their bus routes. This is something that RB has dealt with for several years. So we, you know, at some points, we have to use coach buses, and so we increase the expenditures in the activity bus account to cover that. And this is something that all schools are seeing, you know, because if you have an athletic contest that starts at 4:00, especially if it's something that's outside where they're under the daylight restrictions, a lot of these school bus companies can't cover the routes. So we updated that travel budget to accommodate a lot of those requests.
Are we maximizing our mini bus usage as well?
Yeah, we only have two, so we're doing the best we can with those. We are, we're trying to get a third one.
Right, and we, it's because like other schools that might have full bus service to and from, they don't have that problem, but because we don't have...
Correct.
Full bus service.
Correct. We only, right, we only provide activity bus and athletic transportation. There were a couple other, I'm looking to see about anything else.
There was a question about the fund balance and where that sits us with the county delay in property tax collections.
So right now, we're sitting minus the $2.9 as a reserve to do hopefully the field project or some type of project with the zoo. We're sitting at about 59% fund balance, which is just over six, between six and seven months of operation expenses, let's say, in the bank. Last year, we had to take those expenses almost down to zero with the delayed property tax returns, and we're expecting to do something similar again this year. Trying to see, and we'll go through all my questions I wrote down.
That's all I remember seeing, maybe while you're looking. Do the student advisors have any questions on the budget? I wasn't sure if you guys had submitted anything. It's a little bit of an overwhelming document. I wasn't sure if you had any at this point.
So in the last couple of years, we've had money for COVID, and that's helped our budget. Are we concerned now moving forward, though that money is not part of our revenue anymore? Are we concerned moving forward?
No, I think we expended the majority of that last year. We were through all of our ESTER funds, so we weren't concerned. We took a unique approach when we received those funds to cover our aids and things that we were doing on a regular basis, so that was something that, you know, we used the new money to do the air purifiers and a lot of those things, additional resources for students. So we're not worried about that. We think we're okay.
Okay. Did your questions get answered?
Yes.
Yes.
Any additional questions?
Here's our bills. I think we're...
I mean, I would say, I know Dr. Smetan is on leave, but this is a lot of effort that goes into preparing the budget for the whole team, including her. So if she's watching from home, we do appreciate the efforts on it. You know, it's a balanced budget, right, which is our requirement and our obligation. It does leave us with a healthy fund balance, anticipating delays in property tax collections, which I'm told will not be later than they were last year, if not slightly earlier. So that's a positive. But certainly, we need to operate and be functional without that influx coming in by 12:01. So I appreciate the effort on this, and I would encourage people who have not taken time to do so to look at the significant revenue assumptions, significant expenditure assumptions. It takes a very complex document and really provides some highlights. You can also see from the various funds, that are the statutory funds, how the money is allocated and how we're able to, you know, run the district.
No doubt. Thank you for that. And Dr. Smetan did a good job, and her and I were touching base this week to get the final things put in there. And so the board understands, right, you're approving a budget now on September 12th. This budget's been being used as a tentative budget since when we approved it in June. So we've already just started to tap into that fund balance to pay our bills, to pay our payroll, to do those things. So the fund balance is probably not sitting at 59% today when you're approving a budget because we've been using that until we get, start getting our tax revenues from our next payment.
Any additional questions or comments, or are you comfortable moving ahead? Seeing heads, heads not? Thank you, Ms. Gasko.
Whereas the Board of Education Township High School District Number 208, County of Cook, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared and tentative form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. Whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 12th day of September 2023, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section 1, that the fiscal year of this school district and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024. Section 2, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be the same, be and the same, is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for said fiscal year.
Second.
Hold on one second.
No? That's what I have.
July 1, 2024, right? I guess you did state that.
I just want to make sure we have the correct dates. The motion should read July 1.
July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024.
July 1. Yep, that's correct.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Fiscal year, yep.
No, no, that's just something I want to be very particular on, so thank you.
See, FY '24 budget...
It's FY '24.
Yes.
It covers two calendar years.
Thank you. I was reading, and we have a second from Mr. Van Hoorn, and we do need a roll call on this, please. Ms. Nardi.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoorn?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Yes. I think I asked that same question last year at the exact same time. Every time I see it, it just throws me off, so I apologize. New business payment of bills.
There were some questions submitted. The first student invoice dated 9/6, but includes services from sports that are currently in session. A lot of this was from the spring. It is a catch-up invoice, so we got about 27 invoices I had to go through with the business office in Kristen's absence to make sure we reconciled everything from May.
It just struck me as really unusual activity.
Yeah, unfortunately, they did not send that until after July 1st.
Okay.
Hardspring Room and Board is a residential placement for special ed students. Village Riverside Police Services for graduation. So whenever we have a large event like graduation, we do request officers both inside and outside. So this year, we had that request, and that's the normal overtime rate that we paid, and it's in line with what we paid last year.
Okay.
There was another question about the athletic, electronic sign. A new electronic sign is up and running on First Avenue. Kristen is still working with the, to follow up with the insurance company from the person that hit the sign to see if that can, will be processed. At this point in time, we have not received any funds, but there has been a claims filed, and we have been meeting with their adjusters on a regular basis. How much is kept in petty cash was another question. Petty cash is about $1,200 on hand in the office, but we probably go through close to $3,000 a month. We use this for ticket change boxes, sporting events, change for cash purses in the business office from students, purchases in the business office when students and parents come in, and cash advances to purchase items when a teacher needs to go to the store and then bring back receipts for reimbursement, things like that. And I believe those were all the questions that were submitted on the bills.
Any additional questions from anyone now that we're looking at them again? Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the September 12, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second from Ms. Flack, and we do need a roll call.
Ms. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoorn?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Do we have any visitors who wish to speak at the second portion of our agenda? No? Seeing none, any requested discussion items? I mentioned my topic earlier, or consideration of items for future meetings from any of my colleagues?
You know, I'd like to make an announcement of a pilot program that we've been working with, the Plumbers Joint Apprenticeship Committee, Local 130. And we're, Riverside is three, one of three suburban schools, select suburban schools, select suburban schools, part of the DVRE that have been selected to provide for students, make this available to seniors who have grades of C or better that might be interested in the plumbing trade. And it's a free course, or it's a free class. It runs from October 2nd to December 15th, probably like once a week, Tuesdays or Thursdays, a couple hours. And you'll be learning about intro to tools, safety, and trade-related math. So it's a really interesting thing. It's, like we said, it's a pilot program, but a lot of effort was put into this by, you know, counselors, Beth, Kevin, Hector, everybody, along with the people from the DVRE. And we're hoping this is going to be a success because we'd like to be able to mimic something like this into other areas within the school that, you know, try to get something for everybody. If we can try to get these pilot programs and do something similar with the different training programs.
Counselors will be sending these flyers home to seniors and announcements home to seniors, senior parents. It's only for seniors. Member DVR is part of the cooperative. We work with Plains Valley Regional. So I think it was Lydon, Ridgwood, and RB that were selected. And if there are senior students interested in the plumbing trade, they have an opportunity to take this course. And if they complete this course, they'll get five points and towards their recommendation upon graduation of their senior year to go into the, for apprenticeship at the Plumbers Union. So again, we're trying to do career pathways for all students, so college and career pathways. Thanks to Mr. Durkin for his help in making those connections. And then thanks to, like he said, all the counselors, Ms. Augustine, and the director of DVR, one of his and our career pathway coordinator, Erica, as well, put this together.
So are those courses going to be held here?
No, it's down at the Union Training Center on 1400 West Washington. So it's for three different, three different high schools. It's at their training center where they actually do their apprenticeship program.
So outside of school hours?
4:30 to 6:30.
Okay. So since it's outside of school, we don't have to be concerned about who's teaching them or any kind of backbone checks or anything?
This is through the Plumbers Union there. We're working through those details. We'll have a staff member attend. Or each high school will rotate a teacher once a class to have somebody there. But right now, we're just trying to get it out because it starts in October.
I mean, this sounds like a internship.
Classroom size is going to be 2021 max.
It's really an opportunity for a kid if they want to pursue it. It's not necessarily...
Right, I'm just wondering if we have an obligation to have any kind of oversight or...
There's going to be a rotation, I think, of teachers from each...
We're not sponsoring it.
Okay. And then is this helping them prepare for that exam that they take?
Correct, it's like trade math and tools and some of those things.
You know, special thanks, too. I need to acknowledge John Gardner from North Riverside who made the introduction for me to the Plumbers Union. And so this began a couple of years ago. So I'd like to thank John, the community member and parent, for making that intro. Probably wouldn't happen without his, without his efforts, so.
Thanks, Bill.
That's all.
Can we, I'd like to ask for, now that we're getting into the trades, and I know that students are at Triton College taking classes, can we look into the trends as to where our students are starting to go? And if we are noticing a difference in two-year, four-year certificate programs and now apprenticeship programs? Just curious to see what our students are choosing.
Okay, and we're also, I thought, I was thinking you were going to go with this, but I wrote that down. Dr. Freitas, that's something you need to follow up with, Beth?
Yes.
I think we cover that in senior exit surveys, where we try to get whether they're committed to a two-year school, four-year school, or trade program, or military. The second thing is, I think we're going to schedule something towards the end of first semester to hear from some of our students that are doing the dual credit at Triton that are starting their day off at Triton. We've had some really positive feedback from those students about them being involved in those programs at Triton and coming here for the second part of their day. So I thought that'd be something that the board would like to hear as well.
That, and then if we can just follow it up when the National Clearinghouse Report is available to us to see how many of our students who intended to enroll actually enrolled.
Okay. Dr. Freitas, you can handle that with Beth, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just curious to see what the trends are going to be.
Maybe a little early. We'll be curious, right?
No, no, I think now is the time to, I think also, we have to be mindful of ensuring that all students get the information and that we're not, we're just ensuring everybody gets information on two-year schools, on four-year schools, on trade programs, on apprenticeships, and just trying to avoid tracking students. Coming from Triton College, I can, I've seen it. So I'm just trying to be mindful, especially with our DEI initiatives that are in place, making sure we look at all of these post-secondary options through that lens as well. Thank you.
So can, I beg the indulgence of our student members, is the sentiment of the trades and these opportunities starting to permeate the student body? Do you notice the student body is getting interested in it? Maybe coming up with ideas or wanting to do stuff like this?
I have seen students interested in the Triton program we offer. I don't know how much I can say. Clarion's working on an article, I think, about to publish about the students who are in that program. And along the path of that, we've seen other students who are curious about it and interested in taking that as a possible opportunity.
Is the information rightly available to students?
Yes. A lot of them either ask seniors who are taking the course, or if not, they ask their counselors who can guide them to the direction or with further or better opportunities that come with either Triton or either some of the classes that are taken here that help them prepare with like life chores. Like I know there's foods and nutrition, that's also an option. But then there's also child development